All right, so I am Mayor Meg Grenear and as it is six o'clock, I will call this meeting to order. For anyone outside the village staff who was attending this video conference, I would ask if you would please identify yourselves.
Bill Evans.
We know there's many more out there, but we'll figure it out. Because there are so many callers for tonight, if we can get everybody to keep their microphones muted unless they're speaking. Help with feedback. I don't know. I didn't catch what that person said. All right, so I will now do roll call of village staff. Deputy Mayor Seth Harris.
Present.
Trustee Diane Foley.
Present.
Trustee Brian Marsh.
Present.
Trustee Tim Lane. Clerk Don Hannerhand.
Present.
Village Attorney Steve Raphus.
Present.
Code enforcement officer Lyle Darmeco.
Meg, I think you're muted.
Oops. All right. Where did I? Who was the last name I called?
Lyle.
All right. And then Police Chief Frank McClos. He's left the meeting. And intern Annika Fisher.
Present.
Okay. On behalf of the village board, I would ask all residents that we please keep our first responders, all essential workers, and those affected by this pandemic in our thoughts and prayers. September 2nd, 2021, Governor Kathy Hochul signed legislation extending virtual access to public meetings. Under New York State's Opens Meetings law, which allows New Yorkers to virtually participate in local government meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic. The legislation, which was initially implemented by executive order during last year's state of emergency, allows state and local government meetings that are normally held in person to be held remotely instead, as long as the public has the ability to view or listen to the meeting and as long as the meeting is recorded and later transcribed. This statutory change will reduce the need for congregant congregation at public meetings while the Delta variant and the new variant is prevalent while ensuring public business can continue. First up on the agenda, we have a special use permit application for 5 Elmwood Road. Eric is not on yet, but he will be shortly, but I guess, Steve, are we good to go with that without Eric?
Yeah, I think so. What we need to do under the, under the village code, under section 169, in particular, 16947. Based on a conversation I had with Eric, it appears that the the application has been submitted and there have been some comments from, from Jason or from Eric's offices regarding the application.
Yeah, Sal is also here to present tonight.
Okay. And that we are this is, this would be considered, since we're doing things out of order, the application's been submitted, but this would technically be the pre-application conference, which would now set the, or trigger what's required under 16947. In particular, the village needs to hold a public hearing within 62 days. Doesn't have to wait 62 days. It can be a shorter timeframe than that. And then the village has to submit or render a decision on the application for the special permit within 62 days after that. And again, it doesn't have to be 62 days. It can be a shorter timeframe. So that's where we are right now.
Okay, so we'll open the floor up to Sal. I know I saw you in there. You're not in my pictures right now, but if you want to speak to the board, you're welcome to at this point.
Sal, you're muted.
I'm not sure if Sal's gonna speak. This is, this is Dave Ingles. Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Hi, Dave. Thanks.
How's everyone been? Hope everyone's been safe and healthy. This is a interesting application. It's really an update or a amendment, even though it's a new application. It's really an amendment to a previous plan. Obviously, the board is aware. We spent a lot of time with the village board going through the previous application with Joe DeVivo for his proposed buildings for the apartments, which was actually approved in, the site plan was approved in July of 2018. Special use permit was previously approved in March of 2018. And there were some area variances which were previously approved prior to that time. The project is basically the consolidation of the originally proposed three buildings. The new proposal, which again is located at 5 Elmwood Road, the site of the Olympic Lane's bowling alley, is now proposed to construct a single three-story, 76-unit workforce and affordable rental housing apartment building, which again is generally in the footprint of the former bowling alley. Similar scenarios for development. Surface parking, the surface parking, we have 100 and, I believe, 112 parking spaces. Excuse me, 114 parking spaces, 12 of those banked, which is in excess of the 1.5 required. So we meet all the requirements for the parking. Probably don't need quite as much. So we would, we would propose to bank 12 of those spaces. But again, the water would connect to Elmwood Ave, or excuse me, Elmwood Road. Likewise, sanitary would connect to the existing sanitary sewer on the easterly side of the site. On-site stormwater, we're holding the same stormwater scenario. We had a bio-retention for water collection, quantity control, and treatment controls. Again, the context is 378 borders, the project to the south. We have a public park to the north owned by the village of Menands. We do have some residential homes about 400 feet away on the north side of the park. And primarily commercial industrial along the west side of Elm Road, Elmwood Road, which includes the OmniMax sales and the Tag Solutions. So again, the product is to go through the site plan, special use permit for a single building, 76-unit building. And then we would provide the 114 parking spaces in support of that, 12 bank spaces. And then we did go through and we responded to some of the Chazen comments. I'm not sure if Eric would prefer to go through the Chazen comments. But we did respond to them. And again, most of those are addressing the special use permit requirements as the town attorney has noted in that section 169. So did the board get a copy of the plan showing, showing the new layout?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Yeah, Dave, thank you. Just, and I think maybe the only one who wasn't on the board at the time when the, the prior approval was given was Tim. And Tim, just so you're aware, back in 2000
I wasn't on either.
Oh, Brian, okay. Back when the prior approval was given, the prior special permit was, was granted by the board. It was unique to that particular developer, that particular individual. And that was specifically within the, the special permit approval. So while there was one that was given before, it was unique and it was specific to that particular developer. I just think that's an important point. In the context of going through the comments and the recommendations from, from Eric and his company, that's something he can share with the board. I think really the next thing that the board needs to do is to decide when it wants to set up a public hearing now that we've met the pre-application and the application aspects of the, the process laid out in the the code. So the next step would be to set up a, a public hearing.
Eric has joined us. Eric, we're going over 5 Elmwood.
Okay. A few minutes late, my apologies.
Nope. Steve had just, they mentioned about the letter. Steve said you could fill us in maybe later, but I don't know if you have any comments for tonight before we set it up for a public hearing?
Um, yeah, I guess I would offer that the, the letter, and hopefully the board has seen it. The, the letter is essentially the, the 10 points of the special use permit criteria. It's, it's initially, each, each criteria has the applicant's, let's call it commentary on how they, they either meet or do not meet the general spirit of that, of that criteria. And then I've provided some commentary to go along with that too, from, from, from our perspective for the village's consideration. So each point has commentary along with it and, you know, would provide some context for each of the, each of the points.
Okay. So Steve, just them presenting it to us tonight has opened the door and now the next step is a public hearing. Is that what you said? I mean, not much dialogue tonight or?
Yep. The, the, the trigger, the board by code, by the village code is required to hold a public hearing on the special permit application within 62 days. Within, it can be sooner than that.
So do we want to set up a public hearing for the December 20th meeting then and keep the ball rolling on this?
That would be a board decision.
Yeah, and that's
Yeah, I, I see no problem with that. I'll, I'll move to schedule a public hearing to review these special use permit for 5 Elmwood for December 20th, 2021.
So just, just to be clear, are we, we're not receiving any information? We're not having a discussion right now?
Well, this is, this is Dave, not to be rude and jump in, but we, we have responded to the Jason comments from Eric. We are prepared to discuss any of those if, if the board would like. And we also have a copy of the plan if there's any, minimally any questions or comments that the board would like to review. We would be glad to attempt to field those and answer any questions. So we'll let you do your thing on the, on the public hearing, but we're also here to, to address the special use permit 10 points that Eric brought up and the site plan if, if the board so desires.
All right. Well, I mean, we're here to vet it. So if any of the board has any questions, so we're doing it now and not during this public hearing, it might be beneficial. So.
Yeah, I guess, Eric, could I, could I jump in for one second? I apologize. So, so again, I apologize if I was a few minutes late. But Dave, did you do a, just a very brief overview of the project before I got here?
We did. We went through basically our project statement, which was simply stating where the project is, what the project is, a little bit about it. Okay. In terms of the overall site development proposal, yes.
So we did a bit of a, the pre-application conference, I guess we could call that. All right, good.
Yes. Yep.
So, so if I can ask, so I, I, again, I was not on the board when this was approved and reviewed the last time. Full disclosure, I am a Realtor, licensed Realtor, and so I am in real estate. And I just, I'm trying to understand what makes this site specifically desirable for residential housing other than the fact that it was previously approved for such? And can you elaborate? Like what, what is it about this site that makes it advertising goodness?
Well, I think from a location and zoning standpoint, it meets the requirements. But I think maybe Sal would want to jump in and explain how he came to show interest in the site. I think that probably would be appropriate.
Sal's having trouble unmuting his microphone, so he has been?
No, I'm good now.
You're back in? Okay.
You can hear me? Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Don, Brian, Seth, Stephen, David, Eric. It's very nice to see you. It's been a long time since we saw each other, whether in person or camera. So I hope you've all been well and, and healthy. So I, this was previously approved for residential development, so that gave me the reason that, you know, this can be re-approved for residential use. And other than that, it's a, the location of the site is very good as far as the commutability. It's a quick on and off the highway, of the, of Broadway, of the highway, which, and to the bridge that leads you to the other side of the river. There's a bus that runs from Troy to downtown Albany. So it is a commuter-friendly location and it was previously approved for residential. So that is why I came to the village and met with you in 2019, December 2019, to see if we can get it re-approved for residential use.
Sal, could I jump in here for a second?
Yeah.
With respect to the prior application, there were a couple of conditions outside of the 10 requirements that are found under the code. One of the conditions was that the project be completed within 180 days of the first shovel going into the ground. Another condition, which was important to us, to the board at the time, was that the applicant show proof of financing before a special permit could be, would, would be issued. So can you just, just share with us briefly whether or not there's financing in place for the, for the development?
Okay, so the, maybe the, so the current, so I am in contract with the current site owner. He's a very good man. His name is Joseph DeVivo, a very nice gentleman who has been very patient all along. And he wants to see this project, you know, be built. So he, what he had in mind maybe was private financing to build market rate housing. So I got into contract with him. I'll be happy to share a copy if you need it for affordable housing. So he knows fully well that this development that I was contemplating was affordable housing. And the way that works, it have, we have to follow a certain number of steps for that. So the financing for that is not the same way as a market rate, like walking into a bank. And so here we, we get financing from New York State. So that's why we need this approval, we need the village board to approve it as for workforce and affordable. And then the state will approve our budgets that, that we have already prepared for affordable housing, workforce housing. And then they will schedule us for financing, for closing. So that's the, that's the timeline.
Has the state given you any written indication that it will approve the financing for the construction of this project?
No, we have just had phone calls. The way it normally works is that the, the written confirmation comes way down. Like it, this is too early for that. Meaning that first we will need the, we will need the site plan, we will need the village to approve it as workforce and affordable housing. And we will then submit it with our budgets that we have already prepared. And then, then they were, they will give what was called a green light, which is even that is even verbal. From my experience, we have done many of these projects before. So even that is verbal. The written confirmation only is in the form of tax credit allocation, which happens way down the line. So that will be sometime next year. After having first received your approval with the, with the village's approval.
Let me, let me jump in and then Tim's got a question. But let me, let me just jump in. Board decision, but I know in past applications for special permits, that the board has made it a requirement or a condition of granting the special permit application, that financing be in place before it grants a special permit. What the board decides on, in, on, on this particular application is entirely up to the board. But just to give you a heads up, that's what they've required in the past. I'm sorry, Tim, I know you have your hand up.
That's more or less rather where I was going because he may have certain requirements in order to get the financing that, that we should probably be aware of. What requirements he's going to need to meet in order to have the financing and it, you know, that we should be aware of. In addition, I would like to point out the fact that, you know, as it currently stands, you're looking at, what you're talking about is affordable housing, but there's no nearby grocery anymore. There's, there, you know, just a few years ago, we had a, we had a price chopper nearby, which would have been very convenient for people living there. And as you, as was noted in the, in the project statement, it's expected that many of the people who, who reside there, you're like, there's no concern with the parking because a lot of them, a good number will not have automobiles, which means they'll be relying on public transportation. So does that present you with any issues as far as that goes?
The, the, the grocery did come to my mind, the groce, the lack of grocery store. Because there are smaller stores, but they're far away. There's not a, like a box shopping grocery store. You know, like a supermarket type grocery store. So that, I was hoping that maybe it opens up during all this time, but it hasn't. But there's a perfect spot for it and I hope that somebody goes and takes that. It's you know, so that, other than that, that's one thing that it lacks. I agree with you. But other than that, we, it's very commuter-friendly location in my mind.
Would, would you at this point be aware of the other requirements you're going to need to meet as far as the financing?
Yeah, for financing, first of all, I would need this to be approved for workforce and affordable housing. And I would need a letter of support. And we'll present that to the state in, with, along with what's called a concept paper. It's the first requirement of the state is to present a concept paper. And with that, the letters of support go with that. So we will tell them that the village has green-lighted it. Here's a letter of support. They, you know, they, they have approved our site plan. This is what we're proposing, three-story building, 76 units. And then once they, once they approve the concept paper, then they green-light it. That means they put it into their pipeline for closing. And at that time, we will put all efforts in to make sure that we reach the closing table with them as soon as possible. As far as proof of financing, where I can typically from the developer's stand, like to build affordable housing, what's needed is the developer needs to have experience of previously developed affordable housing. So I can demonstrate that to you. We have done that. The state knows that. Then in addition, as far as the, there are some other, all the other like equity requirements and all that, of course, it's understood. Without that, the, like every project has, has those. So it's, you know, it's in, in affordable housing, it's, it's minimal. The equity requirements are almost minimal because almost all the financing is coming from public sources in the form of loans and subsidies. So there's a great need for workforce and affordable housing. Workforce-wise, I think because
Sal, where, where does, where did you get that information? Where specifically, if I can interrupt, I apologize. Where specifically did you do, did you do a market study that said there's, there's a need for this and?
Yes. Yes.
Can you share that, that market study with, with the board?
Yes, I have a market study by a very reputable firm called Newmark Knight Frank. They also do all of the analysis and appraisals and market studies for the state of New York. So we use them all the time because then there's very little objection because the state is also looking at the same data. So if you, if the board wants to see it, I can transmit it and you let me know who, who I should send that to. There's a very strong need. Yes, demonstrates a very strong need for workforce and affordable housing.
In addition to that, could you provide our village clerk to pass on to us information on the other projects you have, the other similar?
Yes, I can do that. So I will send a, like, I can see almost an introduction with listing the projects that we have done. And along with a market study for the Menand site, which shows a very strong demand for workforce and affordable housing in, in the village of Menand.
Sal, can you, can you do me a favor? And as I know this question will, will come up at both the public hearing as well as to board members as well. Can you discuss and maybe define a little bit more clearly workforce and affordable housing? That can, I, I know it's, it depends on the community. You know, you go up to, to Lake Placid and their idea of affordable housing is anything under $400,000.
Sure.
Every community has a different definition. So what would be?
Seth, I, I lost the last, I couldn't hear the last part of it, but I understand your question. So in, in all parts of New York State, the, we have AMI area median income numbers. The capital region has quite strong, outside of New York City, the capital region has quite strong AMI numbers as compared to other parts of the state. Meaning that the income here, incomes here are higher. Are relatively higher. So what we have proposed is ones, one and two-bedroom apartments only. So we, we have not, we're not putting three-bedroom apartments in because that will put a lot of load on the property and also on the school district. So we have limited it to ones and two, 80% one-bedrooms and 20% two-bedrooms. So it's very few number of two-bedrooms. So that will limit it to either individuals or very small families. So that's by design, we did that. And we have very strong demand for both one-bedrooms and two-bedrooms. And the, so, and the other thing we have done is that we have, so the, the, this project that we are targeting 50%, 60%, 70% and 80% AMI area median income populations in the, in, in your, in this, in this, in this area, in this immediate area. So what that will do is that people who make even 80% of the area median income will be eligible to live in this in this project. So it was, is not, so we have to include 50%. That's by definition. So, but what we have done is instead of just having 50 and 60% AMI, we have also added higher income bands, which are this 70 and 80% AMI. So we are, you can say that it is also geared toward middle income.
Right. So what, what is our AMI here? What, what do you have it as?
I'll check my spreadsheet because from the time I started the project to now, it has been published twice already. So I'm gonna, if you, if you please bear with me, I'm gonna go to my spreadsheet and I check it for you. Or I can email it later, but I can quickly try to find it. Because it is, it gets updated every year.
Right. Can I ask another question while you're looking for that?
Sure.
Is it, is it fair to say that the funding sources for these type of projects are very competitive?
I will, you bring up a great question. So there are two kinds of two ways of financing affordable and workforce projects. One is called the 9%, which is competitive. And the other is the 4% low-income tax credit, which is not competitive. So we are, from the beginning, we have designed this project as a 4%, which is non-competitive. So in that, the only thing we have to do is that present to the state and get their approval, get their green light and present the 4% application. So it, so it saves us all that comparative rounds where we are putting in an application and then if it doesn't get accepted, then we are reapplying the next year or six months later. We are not doing that for this project. We are doing it as 4% from the get-go.
So, so just to follow up on that, if I'm understanding you correctly, there are, there is a very high likelihood the funding will be there. However, the grant or the the free money mechanism is, is less for, okay, so the, the competitive part is the, where, is where you get more free money than? Is it fair to say that it is very likely then that this, this application would, would be funded?
It's very likely they will get funded. But number one, the first thing we need is the, because we were able to balance the budgets. We have a, you know, the, the, the income here's are higher. And so we are, we were able to balance the budgets. And, uh, so we are, we were able to balance the budgets. So the, um, you had the other question. Yes. So the, your other point was that, yes, the nine percent means more uh, subsidies and less debt, whereas the four percent means more debt and less subsidy. So four percent is less attractive in that sense because you have more debt, you're carrying more debt and getting less subsidies. But at the same time, it's, you're avoiding all the competitive, uh, rounds where you get rejection.
And so you can understand, you can understand, I mean, if we go through this entire process, I mean, you, you know, this has gone on for years. A- and then you're in a competitive, you know, I mean, it could take you three rounds in attempts in order to get that competitive, those competitive dollars. If they're not, you know, if they're necessary for this project to move forward, you know what I mean? That's, that's, that, that's kind of putting this a big what if or maybe on this project, you know? So I just, yeah, that, you know, in addition to that, I just want to say, this, I just find, uh, for, for, if you were going for nine percent, I just, I just find, there's a reason in real estate, you say location, location, location. And I just, I'm concerned about putting residential in what's zoned as light industrial. Because I, I just, I'm concerned about this location for apartments. You're so close to 378. Um, it's, it's very noisy, especially, especially in the summer. Uh, uh, you're not really close to, um, public transportation. I mean, you have to walk all the way around to get to Broadway. Um, we have the grocery issue. Uh, so I guess I just, I, I'm concerned about even at four percent, uh, whether this exercise will result in an unfavorable viewing at the state level for any type of grant money, considering, you know, um, considering those, those challenges that, that this has, um, I, I just, that, that has me, I, I'm just, you know, I'm on the fence about that.
Okay. The noise study was definitely my concern also. And then, uh, for every site, we always get a noise study done. So right in the very beginning, when I got the market study done, around the same time, I got a noise study done from a very reputable national firm called AEI Consultants. And this came within range, meaning that it's not, uh, unacceptable. So that hurdle we crossed long time ago. If that had come as unacceptable, I would not have, uh, come along so far. So the noise wise, we're okay.
And they were able to calculate some of those noise, uh, ratios, considering now, instead of, you know, the, the structures that were previously proposed, you're now at three stories.
Yeah, I can, uh, if you want, I can, I'll be happy to send a copy of that noise study along with, uh, with the market study. Is that okay?
Sure. Thank you.
Sure.
And Sal, while, uh, while you were answering Brian's question, I, I, I looked up and assuming that we're looking at the same number, uh, the Bureau of Labor Statistics has our, um, uh, AMI for this past year at 66,000.
That sounds right.
It's not right?
No, it sounds right.
Oh, it sounds right. Okay. So then if that's the case, so, uh, with my calculation then, uh, for a, uh, one bedroom apartment, um, the, uh, the 80%, so the, the top level income that you'd be looking at is 54,000.
That's right. I'm doing the, uh, right along with you. I'm doing the, the math, but that sounds right too. Yeah, 60,000.
You're looking at somewhere from like 33,000 to 54,000 in terms of income.
That's right. Your, your 80% AMI is 52,800 and your 50% AMI is 33,000. You're right. So within that range, the people who will live in this proposed development will, uh, will have incomes within that range.
So, uh, you know, the, the problem is, and I, I don't, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm sure people have comments about this, but, um, I'm, I'm a teacher, um, and I, I've never been told that I'm overpaid. But, um, even first year teachers, um, in, uh, even in Menance may not even qualify for, uh, for the housing there. I just want to put that out there.
Wow.
So, and again, I, I, I wouldn't say that I'm, um, I'm overpaid, nor do I think that, um, that my colleagues in Menance are. Um, but, um, you know, that's, uh, that's just, I guess that's a concern of mine as someone who was looking for a place in the village, uh, when I first started teaching, uh, and I was living at, at home at the time, um, at my mother's house. Um, you know, that, this would have been a place that I would look for, certainly apartments, but I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have qualified for that. So I just, I just want to put that out there.
Okay, Seth. I'll appreciate, I'll appreciate if you look at the market study and see like for those, uh, uh, bands, 50, 60, 70 and 80. And you can see what numbers it's showing as far as the demand that's there for those in, uh, uh, and you will, you will have a lot of, uh, information in that market study. Like it's very detailed.
Yeah, absolutely.
Please let me know if you have any questions after that, then.
Okay. Um, a- and I, I would, I would like to see that. I'm just talking from, um, from a standpoint that I know. Um, and that's, I guess that's just, that's a concern of mine, but I'd be happy to read the market study between now and the, uh, uh, the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Has that already been shared, market study? Are you going to send that to us?
No, I'm going to be emailing, uh, the market study, uh, our introduction, which shows our experience and, uh, the noise study. These three things I have in my notes.
Okay.
I'll, I'll email it first thing in the morning tomorrow to, to Don.
Sure. And then he can send that to us.
Okay.
All right. So if there isn't any more questions from the board, um, we want to.
Second the motion for the, uh, hearing?
You're on mute, Meg.
Did somebody make the motion?
I, I, I had earlier.
Okay. And then Tim, you're seconding?
I am seconding Seth's motion, yes.
All right. So we're going to set down the public hearing for December 20th at six o'clock. Um, Don will make the notices, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. Um, Sal and Dave, we look forward to seeing you again in two weeks. Thanks for coming in tonight.
Thank you very much for all your time. Thank you very much, all of you. Have a great evening. Thank you. See you soon. Thank you.
Okay.
Take care.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thanks, everyone.
All right, um, Don is, uh, Dave here for 37 Simmons?
No, you can, we can, we'll table that.
Okay. Um, we have a discussion regarding subdivision for 18 Graffunder.
I'll unmute myself for that. So, um, I forwarded and it was in your, your board packet, uh, little map that shows, uh, what is being requested. For purposes of disclosure, um, I had previously represented the Foley residence. Uh, that's number 15 Graffunder, uh, for the sale of their property. Um, prior to, uh, Jack Foley passing away about a year ago, a little over a year ago now, uh, Dave Rowley, who lives at 18 Graffunder, uh, the, the, the blue house on the, on the top part of the map, uh, had asked Jack and Jack allowed David to take over a piece of Jack's property, which is that triangle in the middle, uh, that Pam Rowley has been gardening for the last 20 years. Um, Jack passed during the point at which this was going through survey um, and, uh, and through the towns process because the middle line that draws diagonally from right top to left bottom uh, is the line, the top portion being in the village of Menance and the bottom portion being in the town of Colony. So Colony wants, uh, us to, uh, simply okay their, uh, division of that small little piece. That piece would then be solely owned by Dave Rowley. He would receive a separate tax bill for that little sliver from Town of Colony. Um, and then obviously the Foley property would be reduced by that small little sliver. Um, none of this is in the village of Menance, uh, none of this parcel that's being requested to be, uh, transferred. So, uh, but because part of Jack Foley's parcel in the lower left corner is in the village of Menance, they're simply asking for our board approval. So, um, basically what, what, uh, Dave Rowley has asked, go ahead, Tim.
All right. So no portion that's, that of that, of that sliver is in the village of Menance that, 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 uh, the rallies are purchasing?
That's correct. And they're, and they're not even, it's not even a purchase. It's, it's a, it's a dollar transaction.
Okay. So the portion of the Foley property that, that is in Menance still remains attached to that Foley property. Okay.
And that's at the very, the very bottom left. Uh, you could see kind of where, uh, above that, above the, the left circle, there's a tiny little sliver that Jack, uh, owned that is in the village. Um, none of this is in the village that we're talking about, but simply because the part of the 15 Graffunder parcel was in the village, they wanted our okay.
What are they going to do with that little parcel?
Nothing. It's, it's simply, it's simply garden that is, uh, is going to be maintained as garden. Um, but now the rallies will physically own it.
Steve, is this more or less a formality on our part? Is that, is that the way it plays out? I mean, do we?
Are you asking me, Tim?
Yes, I am. Yes.
Yeah, it, it, it sounds like it. Sounds as if, uh, uh, since it's in the town of Colony, if the town wants to approve it, seems to be more of a courtesy. Uh, is that fair, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. I, I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the, uh, action.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay.
I appreciate your disclosure, Brian.
No problem.
Who's second? I got lost there. Who's second though?
Seth. I did. Seth did.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So we need a motion to approve the board meeting minutes of November 15th.
So I moved to approve the board meeting minutes of, uh, um, of November 15th.
Second, Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Okay. War number 13, general. Eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven, seven dollars and seven cents. Water, eighty-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Sewer, fifty-two thousand, three hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents, totaling one million tw- two, twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars and forty-one cents. Payroll number 13, one hundred and three thousand, four hundred and twelve dollars and thirty-three cents.
So move, Brian.
Second, Seth.
Second, Diane.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve, it's good. Meg, before we go on, um, Ricky Link is here from Cranesville Block regarding, uh, 45 Broadway. Just let you know.
Just, just to jump in quickly on that, uh, Bill Wellie, who was the attorney for Cranesville, uh, was emailing me earlier in the meeting indicating that somebody, uh, from Cranesville had showed up at the village offices for the board meeting. Apparently they were unaware of the fact that they were being done virtually. Um, so, uh, I got back to Bill and, uh, as I understand it, uh, they have, and, and this can be confirmed, that, uh, they have sent out for, I, I think bid, or they're looking for, uh, bids on, uh, demo. And I've asked Bill to get back to me and Lyle as soon as possible, uh, with the, uh, with the plans and the timing of when the demolition could be, uh, completed. So I'll let, I'll let the representative from Cranesville address that, but I wanted to make that part of the record.
Okay.
All right. Let's finish up with the transfers and then we'll, um, let them go in the conversation.
All right. First transfer, um, Treasurers were, uh, requesting that we transfer $6,300 from the village, from the vehicle savings account with lease equipment miscellaneous to cover the cost of the speed trailer.
So move, Brian.
Second, Tim.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, Don, I meant the transfers that you sent us, not that transfer, but.
I, I, yeah. I apologize. Um, but we have, uh, three, one transfer, actually two transfers. Fourteen thousand, seven hundred dollars from the contingency account go to economic development, contractual, seniors insurance, a thousand, least retirement, eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. And then we also have from telecommunicator full-time, twenty-five hundred dollars to overtime, twenty-five hundred dollars. Those are your transfers.
So move, Brian.
Second, Seth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, um, that, Don, why don't we move ahead with, um, Chasin or Cranesville?
Cranesville, okay. Um, Ricky, do you want to talk? Ricky, you're muted.
Is he there, Don?
He, he's, he's on the, he's here, but it's, um.
Ricky, if you, um, if you need, um, the, in the bottom toolbar, uh, please click the leftmost icon, the picture of the mic, and that, that'll unmute you.
It's not working.
Yeah, it works.
There you go.
All right. You got me?
Yeah. Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry, guys. Um, yeah, I was unaware, uh, we came down to the, the, the main ho- office, but I, we were unaware that this was a virtual, so it's, uh, my apologies. It wasn't on our letter. Uh, but in any event, uh, so yeah, as, as the gentleman spoke of, Bill Wellie, our attorney, um, we've got, uh, two different, um, uh, requests for pricing to tear the building down. Um, and we've also got a request out, I don't know the name of the company, to come in and look at the, uh, if there's any type of asbestos remediation that needs to be done prior. Uh, so we're, you know, eager to get it done. It's just, uh, we're waiting for these two people to get back to us. Uh, you know, it's a tough time now getting people to, you know, even give us some good quotes. So we're struggling there. We started a couple, three weeks ago trying to get quotes, but that's kind of where we're at right now. Uh, we've got two different companies, uh, one's Jackson Develop, or Jackson, um, uh, demolition, and I'm not aware of the other name of the other company for the demolition part of it. Uh, so we are actively trying to get this done. Um, and maybe I can get back to your next meeting in a couple of weeks and with more information on where we are with it. Or, or unless Bill Wellie gets a hold of the, uh, of the attorney and, and has more information for him.
So Steve, um, based on the engineering reports and everything, this, um, it was imminent danger of this building, it needed to come down. So as far as the village is concerned, what are we looking at as far as leeway here? Because, you know, we've condemned the building, I believe, and in that case, you know, this can't go on for months on end.
Right.
Well, it's only been a couple of weeks. We, we're just not getting anybody to respond and getting anybody to responses don't include all the, you know, the, the quoting information that we need. Um, so.
Well, uh, let, let me address that. First of all, the, the, this building was red tagged quite some time ago. Um, it's been a, uh, an issue and there were notices sent to, to Cranesville, not only at the property address in Menance, but also at your address, I believe in Amsterdam. Um, so it, it, it's not just a, an issue that is, you know, sprung on you, sprung on you two weeks ago. Um, the second issue is it's ultimately up to the board to decide. Uh, right now, there's an order in place for condemnation, condemnation and, and order to, uh, demo the building because of its, uh, uh, because of the issues regarding its being structurally unsound and a, a, uh, health and, uh, life and safety issue. It's a danger. So it's ultimately up to the board what they, they want to do. What I've said to the attorney, I just sent him an email saying, you've got to let us know. I mean, just telling us that you're out getting bids, we just, we need more of a timeline because otherwise, uh, it's entirely possible that the board, uh, the board has the ability right now to go and, and get estimates and have the building demo. uh it's entirely possible that the board, uh the board has the ability right now to go and and get estimates and have the building demo uh and charge that back to the uh back to Cranesville. So it's a again, a board decision as to what uh what it wants to do, but it has the ability under the code uh to take steps to have the the building demo and charge it back to Cranesville.
And what is going on with the tenants that were in the back? I know there was comments about it being um because of the moratorium, it was hard to get them out of there, but that whole property has been condemned, so they shouldn't be there anymore, right?
Are you asking? Uh, yes, yes, they're not, they're not, I was there in fact today, um and and spoke with the owner or the 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 uh the renter's son and explained it again to him uh what the process was here and that they had to be out immediately, and uh I guess Bill Wellie has spoken since then this afternoon to the uh tenant and and has gone on a little bit further with the tenant as far as uh what what the what's gonna happen to get them out as well. Um, yeah, they're they've been evicted, they haven't paid us, they paid us two months' rent out of the eighteen months or so they've been there. Um, so we've been trying to get rid of them, but with COVID, we couldn't, so um yeah, again, Billy Wellie, our attorney, would probably have a further update on that, uh and 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 uh maybe with your attorney, and he can communicate that and and you can he might have a better, more information than I do.
So Steve and the board, are you comfortable with having them come back in two weeks to give us a report, or are we not, is that not a good idea?
Ultimately, the ultimately, that's a board decision, whatever the board's comfort level is.
Have have you tried Dan's demolition?
Uh, I'm not sure, to be honest with you, I I was just asked to, I'm a local guy, was asked to come in and speak to you people about what was going on, uh I'm not, I'm not sure who they've contacted, again, that would be our ownership and Bill Wellie would know that. I know Jackson demolition is one, and I'm not sure who the other company is that they contacted.
So Jackson, right now, I know is tied up, uh they're the people that are are doing the Tobin's First Prize demolition.
Okay.
Um, so I mean, you know, the uh which is a rather large property, so I would I would bet that they're gonna, that that this would not happen with Jackson until after that's done. Um, Dan's uh Dan's is is a smaller outfit and might might be able to hammer this out for you, uh you know, a little a little quicker. Um, just just, I know, I know they've they've done similar uh demolition projects before, so.
Okay, I will forward that on in the morning to uh to the ownership and let them make a call.
Um, so I I'm, I I can't necessarily say yes or or no, I mean, I I think I'm comfortable waiting for two weeks. Um, I don't know if Eric would have any feedback um or any recommendations from a more um logistical standpoint, from more of an engineering standpoint. Um, it to say, should we wait till December twentieth and then go from there?
Yeah, uh thanks, Seth. I guess, you know, the way um, you know, the way we need to look at it is, this is a building that is in uh a structurally deficient condition, it's in danger of collapse, and it's endangering any any public that are in the nearby vicinity of of the the property, and so the factor I think the board is weighing is do we feel Cranesville is committed to following through? Or do we need to take the matter in our own hands? And and I don't mean to be blunt or frank, but that's just the way I see it.
Uh, as far as I know, we are committed to it, guys, uh you know, you you might be better off speaking directly to our attorney or to the ownership. Again, I was uh I was just asked to come in and and let you give you an update of what I know and where we are as of this moment, but um, uh I'm I'm told we're committed to getting it done, that it's just nothing more than trying to get people there for quotes and and uh scope of bit work and all that type of stuff, so, and 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 also the uh asbestos uh evaluation.
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not an asbestos expert, but uh as I understand it, this building will need to be a controlled demolition, you 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 can't go in that building and do any asbestos abatement work, I mean, it's unsafe for entry, it's been red-tagged, and so um, this is a controlled demolition, all material will be considered asbestos and and hauled away uh accordingly, as I understand it, so I'm I'm not sure that the asbestos piece is uh a a a big thing, I think it's it's known that it it's got to be a controlled demolition under DOL uh regulations.
I guess, uh I I don't know that Eric, and maybe you can comment on this, I mean, we we would go right out to the same company as if we took this into our own wheelhouse to try and uh advance it any faster than they might be doing, so I guess uh would would that hurt or would that help? Uh, them getting to those same companies, I just, that's that's the only question I would have.
Yeah, and I again, this is back to, you know, it's the measure of the of the commitment, you know, we've we've been talking about this um for you know, a a significant period of time, I know this has been on Lyle's radar for for quite a period of time, and so, you know, what's the measure of the commitment um today?
Steve, can we require them to get in touch with you or have their attorney get in touch with you within, you know, by the end of the week with a with a plan in place?
Oh, absolutely, whatever the board feels is appropriate.
I feel that as long as things are moving forward and and they have, you know, uh been placed on notice, you know, accordingly, that, you know, even even if they do report to us December twentieth, that doesn't mean no action is taken until December twentieth, that they keep keep in contact and, you know, keep you posted and keep us posted through you.
I think I think that's, I think that's what our plan is, speaking from what I know, I'm pretty sure that's what our plan is. You know, we're just, you know, give you a daily update or whatever you want, I guess, uh whatever you whatever you need to satisfy you, to let you know that we're trying to move forward.
And consider that this is December, if we get a heavy wet snowfall, I mean, that could demolish it as well.
Mm-hmm. Alright, so why don't we have the two attorneys stay in touch, and then Steve can keep us updated, and then we'll plan for December twentieth to have an a final update and with definitive plans for, you know, moving forward, so we can just determine what's the next step. Does that sound alright?
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Okay, I think that's fair to everyone.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll see you then on the twentieth.
Thank you.
Thanks. Alright, we were gonna change, um just because of the length of this meeting tonight, we're gonna move um Annika's interim report up next, and then we'll continue on with the rest of the agenda. Um, so Annika, if you're there, you want to get going on this?
Yeah, awesome, I can share my screen. I will warn you, there is a huge thunderstorm going on right now, so a lot of my neighbors have lost power, so let's hope I don't. Um, okay, can everyone see this?
Yep.
Awesome. Okay, hi, everybody, I'm Annika Fisher, the Economic Development intern, for those of you who haven't met me yet. Um, I want to start off just with some quick project updates, nothing too major, so the CGI Village video that I've been talking about for the past couple meetings, um we're gonna push the approval to the next meeting, just because we've been going back and forth for some um further lead legal consideration with the contract, so I'm gonna try to meet with her this week and get that all figured out, so it can be approved hopefully by next board meeting. Second, the bike share program, we're still waiting to hear back um from them on that, so I'll keep everyone updated once we do hear back from those three other municipalities. Um, and then third, the electric vehicle charger grant, um it's still processing approval, so um, once they give us any other further information, I will keep everyone updated. Okay, so the first project that I've been working on with Meg is the summer food truck paral slash festival, so this is a broad outline of what we were thinking, so we were thinking around like five to ten food trucks and some live entertainment. Um, I put a list of the food trucks that I've reached out to already, and if anyone has other, any other suggestions of some local food trucks that I should contact, please feel free, because I'm not very familiar with the local ones, I've just been um researching online and things like that. Um, so we were thinking of doing a weekly gathering of food and entertainment for everyone to enjoy, say, like after work or something, people could walk over, so um, that brings us to where, we're still trying to decide a location, um I've reached out to the farmer's market, they haven't been super responsive about it, um we were also thinking potentially Mid-City Plaza, but again, if anyone has any other suggestions of some central walkable locations, we would definitely be open to hearing about those. Um, and then once, we decided on these dates, July sixth through August third, every Wednesday from four to seven-thirty-ish, seven or eight. Um, so it would be like a food truck Wednesdays event. Um, does anyone have any suggestions, ideas, or thoughts on this?
I'm getting hungry by uh just looking at the the list of of them, they they all look great, uh several of them I um I see regularly uh at the state capitol, uh and they're they're all excellent, and I think this will be a a huge um a huge event, and I think uh I think people are gonna come from all over, uh all from over our village as well, and this looks great.
Awesome.
They they do have one of these out in uh Kinderhook, uh Velasia area, and and they're very successful with these.
Yeah, Meg actually got the idea from um Poricon, they do a Brent Lake um Food Truck Friday, so that's where we got the idea, and she said it was amazing, so.
And I like that both of those are are not like right here, like they're, you know, they're in the the northeast, they're in upstate New York, but they're not they're not right here, and they're not gonna be competing with us, so I think this will be great for people who live and work in the greater capital region.
So would the would the steps to set this up be to to, you know, pick uh dates and then uh reach out to the vendors to check availability or?
Yeah, exactly, so after we picked these dates, I started reaching out to all of these food trucks, and basically, they all have different uh means of contacting them, so some places I had to call, some places I had to email, some places have like a form you fill out. Um, so it's different um based on the truck, but yeah, so I gave them all the dates and information and our interests, and so I'm waiting to hear back from most of them.
I think it's great, I think, uh so uh as as we wait to hear back, our big thing is gonna be um picking a location, and I think uh they're all all great ideas, I like the um uh Mid-City Plaza uh one, certainly, we can um we can also look at the, um and I don't know if it's feasible because of the time if, uh but um, you know, as we said, we've talked before, the Riverview Center, but if anyone um thinks of of anything, uh certainly let Annika know, because that'll be the, that'll be the big thing we we have to be working on now.
There's also the old two guys, the infrastructure parking lot, which is a good size.
Yeah, that I think that would be great there, it's because it's visible like from from uh the on-ramps and such, and I think that would, you know, people would wonder what the heck is going on.
Yeah, I did speak to Mike at Mid-City about it, and he's gonna get back to me, but there's also a lot of businesses down there, more at that end than the than the north end of the village, so either location would be good, but we'll figure it out.
Absolutely, wha- whatever we can do to bring people in and then uh uh promote our businesses, so they they stay for a while and do a little bit of shopping or exploring. And don't forget, the other nice thing um about, certainly if we did uh Mid-City Plaza, uh people who who are on bike and they are biking along the Corning Preserve, and they get off at our Bike Path Connector, and as soon as they get off the um the the connector they're right at Mid-City Plaza, and they can have some dinner and and stay for some music and then head back to their cars.
Yeah, awesome, okay, cool, so I'll keep everyone updated on that too, as Meg and I work on it, and as I hear from um back from all the food trucks.
Can I can I bring up one more point, I'm sorry, Annika?
Yeah.
I I I like them, I like the infrastructure, Meg, because if we have if we have music down there, there's there's it it's a long way before we hit any residents says to for for as far as sound.
Yeah, if it's good music, it'll entice people to come over, so.
Right, and that's and that's your department, Meg, you're you're the, you're always the one that's good at picking the bands, so.
Yeah, I mean, the concerts in the park are in the middle of a neighborhood too, and people.
I guess, I guess, yeah, I guess, okay.
Alright, awesome. Um, next up is the food co-op, I know I talked about this at the last meeting, but since then, we have some exciting news, so um this week, Meg and Seth and I are meeting with the CFO and the Board of Honest Weight, which is a co-op in Albany of potentially expanding into the village, they were thinking of expanding into Schenectady. Um, so we're gonna talk about the feasibility of potentially partnering with them and seeing if they could open up in Manans, so that's super exciting. Um, I don't know if anyone has ever been to Honest Weight, but I plan on visiting next time I come to the village. Okay.
This is, this is it, and I just, I wanna uh second that, this is a huge uh breakthrough, obviously, there's no um no guarantees of anything, and it's just a first meeting, but the fact that we've been granted that and that they're even considering Manans uh is awesome, and uh I as I, and I know that Honest Weight has a huge following, uh people um think is highly of that, you have, it is the same kind of following, I'm sure smaller, but it has a following just like places like Trader Joe's has, so I think that's huge.
Yeah, very excited about this. Um, okay, so next, I know I mentioned last meeting, or maybe a meeting in late October about implementing the Junior Achievement Program, which is like a uh entrepreneurship program that can be implemented in elementary, middle, and high school students. Um, I had this when I was growing up in elementary school, so I thought it would be a great thing to bring to Manans, it encourages um uh students to think about like opening small businesses when they grow up and things like that, so this is just like an outline of what it entails, and basically, they give um classrooms these kits, um and they provide everything free of charge, and it's a great um curriculum for kids, and so um last week, I spoke with Jolene, who's the head of education over there at Ju- um Junior Achievement, and she talked to me about some program options, and then I got on a call with um Jennifer and Maureen, the principal and superintendent of the Manans School. They were super interested in this program and particularly implementing it in their elementary school. So that's super exciting, and I connected them with Jolene, so they've been in contact, and hopefully, this program can be implemented in the spring or next year. Um, and they're also gonna be in contact with the North Colony School District, because they have implemented this program before as well.
What a great opportunity for the residents, for the students of Manans School.
Yeah, it's a really great program, um I did it when I was younger, and now I'm minoring in entrepreneurship, so it really does kind of work out. Um. And then next, um I've been working on my final project, so unfortunately, my internship is coming to an end, next board meeting will be my last one. Um, and so before I end my internship, um for a final project, I've created a very comprehensive um binder for the next intern and for the village staff or anyone that wants to look at it. Um, this is the table of contents for it, so basically, everything from everything you know, need to know about the internship, I know we kind of started it from the ground up, so everything that I needed to learn when I started the internship, how to um get started on the best foot, ju- ju- basically just explaining everything that I learned my first few weeks on the job. Um, I've included resources, all the projects that I've worked on or that I'm currently working on, and then some future projects and ideas, just so that there's a seamless transition for the new intern. Um, it's around forty pages, so it's pretty comprehensive, this is just an example of like um one of the pages of how I organize my village computer and my village drive and things like that. Um. So I've been working on that, it should be um done by next week, so I'm very excited to hand that along. Um, another project that we've been working on, um Kevin Franklin, the historian, reached out uh mentioning possibly making Broadway a historic district in New York State, so I've been researching like the possibility of that. Um, here's just some broad advantages and disadvantages, honestly, I think it would be a great opportunity, basically, all you have to do is um go through a nomination process, which can be a little extensive, but um it has a lot of good adv- um, it has a lot of good advantages, and I'm meeting with Kevin on Friday to further discuss this. Um, so I'll keep everybody updated on that note. Um, and then going off of that, I will be in person in the village my last time. Um, this Friday, all day. I have a few plans, but if anyone would like to set up a meeting or say goodbye or anything like that, I would love to do so. Um, like I said, I'm meeting with Kevin. I wanted to go visit Honest Weight, since I've never experienced it before. Um, scope out some potential locations for Honest Weight and for the Food Truck Festival. Um, Seth mentioned maybe visiting a food truck in Albany for lunch, so that I can get a feel of, um, how they operate and for the festival. And yeah, that's about it. Um, as always, if anyone needs to contact me, if you wanna set anything up for Friday, or have any suggestions or ideas for anything that I've mentioned, I'd love free to reach out.
Are the food trucks even out in Albany?
I think a few of them are there. You know, you don't have the numbers that you have, uh, like you don't have the, um, Old Daily Inn that has a cart, but I think the, the main ones are there. You have the Greek Truck, uh, Michelle's Charcoal Pit, and, um, the, um, uh, the Healthy Cafe. I, I think that may be it, but, um, certainly you have some nice options just with those.
Definitely pressure them to answer my emails, maybe.
Right, yeah, when, when you're there, uh, make sure you nail down a contact at each one. Buy, buy an appetizer from each one and, uh, nail down, uh, nail them down.
Alright, Annika, well, thank you very much for all you've done. Um, your updates have been phenomenal. Um, we look forward to, you know, continuing your efforts to the next intern, and we appreciate all your work.
Thank you. Of course, thank you guys. And I'll be at the next meeting too, so not, not the last, not the end of me yet.
And certainly, we will, um, uh, you know, there'll be an update be, between now and the next meeting, but I will be, um, uh, introducing our next, uh, Economic Development Intern, uh, to the Board prior to the next meeting. And then at the next meeting, um, we'll formally, uh, introduce her and, uh, ask the Board for approval.
Okay, good. We need a resolution to amend the budget for the Ward's Lane paving. The treasurer requested the Board approve an amendment to the budget by one hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred dollars, with one hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred dollars from consolidated highway aid, sixty-two thousand from storm sewers to cover the cost of paving Ward's Lane. A portion of this will be recovered when we submit our application for the CHIPS money, as the village has two years of funding available for the next filing, which is in March. We need a motion to, um, approve the amendment to the budget for the pa- the paving that was done on Ward's Lane.
So move this, Brian.
Second, Diane.
All in favor? Don, you wanna talk about, um, the south end water bond?
Yeah, um, inadvertently, we, when we put the notice in the paper, the water bond was not put in the paper, and when we found that it's, uh, the pro- we found out that we made that mistake. Um, it has to be re-submitted, re, you know, put in the paper. So I need another resolution. Everything will be dated as of today. It's not gonna affect anything. It's just that, it's just a formality, so we get it in the paper. Just the same resolution that we had for last meeting for the water resolution, just for the water part of the bond.
So we need, second, Tim. Does it need to be read, does it need to be read again?
No, I will, no, because we, it's already, it'll be in the minutes and everything in entirety. You have to read the whole thing. It's thirty-seven pages long.
Okay.
Alright, so all in favor? Okay, um, says discussion regarding forty-five Broadway.
That was, I, we already did that. Um, oh, I said one other thing. We have, oh, no, we already did it. I'm sorry. The cheese vehicles, the next thing we have to do.
So apparently, we got one bid for it for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is that an acceptable bid?
It's, it, it needs six thousand dollars worth of work done to it, so yes, it's acceptable bid. Usually, we get a hundred dollars for it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept a bid of two hundred and fifty dollars.
You made it.
Go ahead, Don.
I'm sorry, Mike Stewart called me today and asked me if we could put, put on, on the agenda, because he had something he wanted to talk about. Mike?
Well, wait a minute. I, I think I was muted, so. All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
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 Good evening. How is everyone?
Hey, Mike.
Hey.
Um.
Good, how about you?
Oh, doing well.
Good.
Apologize for the last minute, but I just got the quotes in. The, um, I did receive a quote. We, it was one of our budgeted items. We'd put ten thousand dollars in the budget to upgrade our struts and airbags on Rescue Six. The current, uh, equipment on there is original from when the rescue was built in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, they are a different brand, make, and model that is outdated. The new, what I'd like to replace it with is from MES. It's off of state contract. It is the same equipment that Skyler Heights, Latham, Bout, West Albany, and New York State Fire use. It is struts to stabilize a vehicle, most likely and/or a building. Um, by having equipment that is the same brand, make, model, manufacturer, allows us to build onto or use the equipment that is on Skyler Heights or Latham or Bout or State Fire if they were to show up. This equipment can also be used for, uh, trench rescue or building stabilization. Um, our current equipment is not compatible with, uh, the other agencies I've mentioned that respond to the village. Um, not that State Fire responds a lot, but they did respond about a year or two ago, when we had the roof collapse at one fifty Broadway. Um, the state bid contract number is seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. We had put ten thousand dollars into the budget for this item. So, any questions?
So you're just looking for board approval to purchase them?
Correct.
Alright, if there's questions, um, now's the time. If not, somebody wants to make a motion?
So move, Brian.
Second, Seth. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Will you say something, Don?
Yeah, Mike, can you just give me that price one more time, please?
Uh, seven thousand nine hundred twenty-six dollars.
Thank you.
Alright.
Mike, is there any residual value to the old stuff?
I'm sorry?
Is there any residual value to the old stuff?
Uh, I'll look into it. I doubt it, the fact that it's twenty-two years old. Um, but I will look into it and let you know, Brian.
Cool, thanks.
Okay, I have a few things to go over. Um, we really received a letter from DEC. thanking us for being a part of the Climate Smart Communities Program. Um, it goes on about all the benefits of it, your commitment to reduce greenhouse gas. Will help protect both our citizens and our environment. So that was that. Um, we had a request from the Manans Public Library. Um, they need to replace its aging heating system. The Board has sought out and received three quotes. Each quote comes in around twenty to twenty-five thousand. Uh, it came to their attention that we received ARPA funds. The library is hoping the village could underwrite some of the cost. Um, I reached out to NICOM, and they advised this does not meet the criteria for the ARPA funding. So, um, that is out of our control as far as helping them with that. Um, we have been making, um, a lot of efforts towards, um, reducing the water deficit over the last couple of years. Um, when Nicole came on board, she's been going through all of the records. Um, she's been working tirelessly on it. Um, she corrected some of the, some of the meters were listed as one-inch meters, when they are in fact one and a half or two-inch meters, um, which resulted in, um, not accurate, actual readings. Um, so that's, she's gone through that and corrected that. She's had the DPW take actual pictures of the meter heads, so she can, um, update the records accordingly. Um, we passed a, uh, local law for the old meters, for the commercial meters to be replaced, which I believe all have been done down now, Don. I think there was two left before, right?
I think there's one more that's lost. We've done, but I'll check on that.
Um, we've replaced higher residential meters. Um, we're getting away from the manual reading of meters, which, um, it makes the meeting readings more accurate, um, the documentation. We also found that huge leak, um, a couple of years ago. Um, so we have gone, on average, uh, two thousand and seventeen, we were at forty-one percent, then it was forty-seven, forty-four, forty-three. And I am pleased to announce that currently we have an eighteen percent water loss. So we've more than, um, cut it in half, um, efforts from, you know, the village office and, uh, DPW and the Board, um, authorizing the, the, the grant that we put in for the, um, meters, which will further reduce this number once, if we find out if we get that approved. Um, I don't know, Don, is there anything I'm forgetting here?
No, they did, we got everything on the water loss.
Okay, so that's.
That's great.
It's a, you, you're supposed to try to stay under twenty percent, because you have, you know, fires and water main breaks and whatever. You're gonna find, you're gonna have some loss, but this is the first time, well, she went all the way back to sixteen, and we were at thirty-six percent. So it's the first time in five years that we've been under the twenty due to the efforts of everybody that's been working on it.
That's great.
So that's good news.
It's really good.
That's awesome.
I had correspondent from Bill Garvey. Um, he saw a silver vehicle abandoned on the entrance to Village One, and he notified the police. And then he goes on about the different reasons why that's not a good idea. Um, while observing a party going on in the pavilion at Kansas Smith Park, he saw one black vehicle parking in the fire lane next to the wooden guide rails. He asked the man whether or not he owns the black vehicle. He told me that he owns the vehicle. He informed him that he was parking in a fire lane. Um, I am not the least bit comfortable with that. I've told Bill in the past, he cannot represent himself as a village employee. Or, I don't know, I just think he's putting himself at risk.
I agree.
I don't know how we stop him from doing it. Um, he felt he didn't need to report it to the police, because he handled it on his own. Um, he's delighted to see that our public works guys cleared, um, brush weeds and grass from a fire hydrant. Um, he noticed they still need to be cleared, um, on the east end of Upland, north side of East Kentmore, Tilling, Tillinghouse near Broadway. Uh, eleven North Lions. Um, please have the DPW kindly remove that. Um, he observed the traffic light on Market and Canal Road, Loads, Roads, going not working. He notified uh, the police about that. And he noticed one large branch by the playground, which had actually come down uh, for the, by the Halloween party in Bryant, and I had moved it, but, um, Don knew about it. And by the time he got backed up there, DPW had already mo- removed it. And he was picking up litter at Kansas Smith, or Pokes, Switzer Park, but was unable to get it all, and he's hopeful that the DPW will, you know, go back and finish cleaning it up. Um, I don't know, I have two matters for executive session, a public safety matter and a personnel matter, but.
I'm sorry, not to interrupt you, just, just, there's one more thing. Um, the PBA has selected new, um, officers. And it's gonna be Daniel Braden as president, Kevin Schwepke as vice president. Mike Case is gonna be the treasurer, and Josh Coleman's gonna be the secretary.
Okay, Steve, was someone from, uh, thirty-five Glenwood, uh, supposed to be coming in tonight to be heard? Or am I wrong on that?
I didn't hear. I haven't heard from Lyle on it.
Lyle, are you on the call?
No, he's not here. Um, he hasn't heard from them. He, he did get the notice. He did talk to Mike, and he gave, Mike, um, Weaver, and he told him that he could come to the meeting and, uh, he gave him the information of the online meeting. And he, he's not here.
Actually, I think it was the December twentieth meeting he told him to come to.
Oh, was it?
He just, he just sent him the letter, so there wasn't enough notice, uh, for this particular meeting.
Uh, you're right, Steve, I'm sorry.
Okay, alright, well, at least we're updated on that.
Don, do we have to, do we have to approve the slate of officers for the PBA?
We have, that's a, a union thing. It's a union issue.
So we don't have to approve it?
No, I don't think so.
It's just for your information.
Okay.
Alright, any other board members have anything?
Um, uh, to add on to our executive session, I have a, uh, legal matter to, uh, to bring up as well in executive session.
Okay, so we have personnel, public safety matter, and legal.
So, so many motions. Motion to go into executive session for, uh, the for said purposes.
Second. Second, Diane.
All in favor?
Hi.
opposed? Alright, well, thank you to the public. Um, you'll have to leave the meeting now, and once we go into executive session. Renee, you can also leave, and we will follow up with the recording, both recordings for you.
Okay, have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.